Call meeting to work. I approve the minutes of the regular meeting held on June 16th. Jim moves, Kyle says. All in favor? We're here. Any public comment? If there's any public comment. Appropriation ordinance number 1402. Paid goods.
Second.
Mike moves, Kyle second, so all in favor? All in favor? Move on to action items. 2022 budget intent to exceed the revenue neutral rate. The budget intent to exceed revenue neutral rate enclosed as the budget timeline. We will need to follow. The notice to the county clerk of intent to exceed the revenue neutral rate must stay what our proposed mill levy will be. At 32.585 is what we've been at for years, right? And that will cause us to exceed neutral rate because our valuations have went up. So. We felt that was a reasonable place to start. And obviously, we'll be talking about why we feel like we should keep that mill levy rate the same. So basically, this is something that we just need to take action on and get it to our. As our timeline states here, about July 20th, and we don't have another meeting before then, so.
I'll make motion that we go ahead and do this notice of revenue neutral rate attempt and get it off to the county.
I'll second that.
Jim moves, Ray seconds, all in favor? All in favor?
I will make one note that our representative Garber was one of the three that voted against this, and I don't know why they didn't think they needed to take care of our business. Mr. Pyle voted for it.
So, as the budget timeline is in our package, we have to have that to them by July 20th to the county. August 4th, approved budget or notice of public hearing publication, so. The 4th is a Wednesday, isn't it? I think that's right. So, the first meeting in August, we'll have to make sure we're at that level unless you're ready at the next meeting.
I think we will be. It's on the table tonight. We can, once you take it home, go through it, we can talk about it at the next meeting if we need to. But it's pretty much prepared tonight for you guys to look at and review. So, if you want to do it in the next meeting, we can, or approve it in the first one in August, we can do that as well, probably.
Yeah. Because of the timeline, I think it'd be best we work on that at the next meeting. And then. By August 16th deadline to get notices to the paper, a notice of public hearing for exceeding revenue neutral rate, notice of public hearing for budget. September 1st conduct the hearings. Is that a Wednesday as well, I guess? Do the revenue neutral rate first and then a budget period. September 1 of '15, we pass a resolution to exceed revenue neutral rate and adopt budget. October 1 is the last day to certify budget to the county clerk. So, that goes for that. Reports and recommendations, we really don't have nothing other than, but we'll go right into our budget planning session, I guess. And attached is a list of departments and projects to consider and prioritize, or key notes about the items. The first thing on here is personnel, and a proposed pay plan and a copy of the current plan are enclosed. Probably an executive session would be appropriate for that discussion, as we do get into different individuals, but we do need to discuss that. Do you have any comments on what you see that doesn't involve individuals, I guess? If you can, we'll be talking about that in a bit. Does anybody have had any comments about the proposed overall increase? No.
Look at this list, though. This is stuff just big room, correct? Because we can't do it all.
No, we can't do it all. Just stuff to consider and talk about. I put a capital improvement fund sheet there to kind of show you what we have to work with.
Right.
If you lay your budget as it is.
Basically, we got about 11 or 12 to work with, correct? What, no way?
Ideally, we wouldn't drain that completely.
Well, I understand, but five out of five.
So, getting right on into the next line items would be the street maintenance department as far as equipment. The loader is probably the first priority. Current loader's 20-plus years old. Has an estimated sale value of $30,000, which would bring that to cost down a bit. Did we have price on what that just began with?
The loader, about 200?
Around 200.
That's at the trade, I take it?
No, I'd be good for it.
Oh, so we.
Is that some brand new price?
Yes.
Okay, so. Possibility picking something up on the option or something, isn't it?
Yeah, and if we traded it, it would potentially bring it out to about 170, is what we need. Expenses.
I think we've been talking about that loader for a few years, haven't we? Don't know.
I'm not sure. I think that is.
Pushed it back once already, that I know of.
I think earlier this year, we put maybe 6,000 into repairs on it. You know, it does, it has cost us a lot to fix it. When something goes down on it.
I don't know, I guess, the way I look at that is, if it is a 20-year spend, that is $10,000 a year, pretty decent spend of money for what they get used each out of that loader.
So, pay for something like that would come out of the capital improvement fund? Yeah, we could co-share a little bit with the sewer and the water fund, if we didn't want to recall out of that one, but that's where the journey could come from.
But the drop truck and service truck? Oh, you got that unless it's 2023 right now, okay. I didn't notice that ever, okay.
So, then, buildings. You had contractor take some measurements and have a rough number of 25,000 for the front office, which would include walls separating office space from the public, customer counter with two windows and two updated workspaces. Anybody have any concerns with that?
Needs to be done.
And that's just for the front? I mean, yeah, it needs done, I agree.
Now that I found my other paper, it gets into remodel, backspace, replace windows, and upper floor renovation. I mean, that's all stuff that needs to be thought about, but your priority for right now would be to get the front office in a reasonable working condition.
Yeah. These other things, I don't know if we want to send those back to a building committee to look at more in depth and what could be done with those. I'd like to get prices on windows to do that someday, but probably not this next year.
Yeah. Definitely, we could look into some grants on that, I would think.
You mentioned somewhere that, of course, the police department just needs some place for storage, or they use any storage here?
They're using a little bit in the basement.
In the basement? Nothing upstairs?
No.
How much do we, I mean, like, I know how many group, I know the groups and stuff are up there, but at what point, certain groups were using those as meeting spaces? Is that still happening?
I think if we get serious about wanting to do something with that, we need to sit down with those groups and see what they really need, and if we can have a common space that they could take turns using, or if they really need their own separate spaces. So, I think that's a more in-depth conversation than we can have now, but I think it's something to consider and make it something more groups can use, instead of just each little group having a space in there.
Yeah, more than using.
Does the girls' club go up there too, or in the basement, or what do they do?
The girls' club meets upstairs, kind of on this end.
Okay.
I don't think they've had it since COVID started.
But I think they still got a middle room that they store stuff in.
Yeah.
The J C rooms still there. What's in the J C room?
I've been up there a while, but.
J C's don't need anymore.
I know, but there's stuff.
But there's some stuff there that I think the chains had some stuff, a bunch of stuff in there, I think. But I'm not sure, maybe some stuff left in there too.
But I think a building committee meeting for where to go with that and at what direct the timeline on that stuff, sort of say.
4H still uses down here? So, we got a big space right here, right below us.
For what?
4H is right below us, it's a big room right there.
It's as, I mean, it's as big as this room is.
I didn't even know the basement.
I thought there was a stairwell right there.
Out of the whole basement, that's probably the nicest area of the whole basement.
Perhaps we should.
Right here. I hear a bathroom back there.
Well, I mean, at least, we're, no, please, the firemen are still there.
Yeah.
Yeah, on the other side.
Yeah, I think we're going to play an easily room, it's just to get it utilized, and the police department, you have to utilize some of that.
That's right. Go ahead, Jerry, Jim.
Streets, I guess we, get on the buildings, we could go ahead with that 25,000. Everybody's good with that. And have a building committee meeting on a timeline for the rest of the building. Moving on to streets, when compared to other communities of similar size, we're doing a decent job of keeping the streets in good shape. However, there are several issues that need addressed. 7th to 11th on Main, Roanoke Street are probably the most in need of help. But streets that have been chipping sealed repeatedly over the years need work as well. Rough estimate of 450 to concrete Main Street plus 150,000 if you want to replace sidewalks on both sides of the street. Minimal engineering would be necessary, since this is a pretty straightforward tear-out, replace project. Wilson Company did it for, set a spec for approximately 25 to 30,000. If they need help during construction, Wilson could assist on an on-call basis.
Well, Roanoke could wait, but that makes me really from 7th to 10th, 11th, 10th to 11th, that matters. That, we really need to do something with that, and I don't think we need to be dealing with the sidewalks, that can be somebody else, that could be the prop sheers, that as far as.
Would the curbs all need to be replaced on Main Street, going this way?
I think they would.
They've been replaced. They've been replaced, but I know if we're going to get Wilson Company, they'll redesign them and get them to flow to the exact pinch. I bet they won't keep any. I don't know that for a fact.
But some of them, okay, I mean, since they, they are fairly decent shape.
It'd be ideal. But when I talked to Brian about that, I don't know, years ago, I asked him how that was flowing, okay, I mean, getting all the storm service and everything else, he says as far as I know, it was, I mean, unless you're actually watching them, you know.
Well, it's going to flow better once you get the street being happy, all the same grade.
Well, you might get a little more, yeah. When you're talking about this milling down Chippin Seal Streets, are you talking maybe like out on? Night Gale, down South Aids?
Yeah, from like Roanoke, about to.
Wherever our line is.
Yeah.
That is making terrible.
It's really bad through there.
Oh, my goodness, if you have to pull into the driveway.
Yeah, there's.
Yeah, there's, I was talking to Brian about that, and he said years ago, they staked it through because they were working on something.
Yeah, we used it for a detour.
They put a big layer on there, and it just, I would have to need it thicker.
Right, they tapered right in.
So, is this what was done with 6th, 3rd years ago, milled down and replaced? Think it happened before I was ever here, but do you guys remember that?
I think it was.
On 6th Street?
6th Street was heavily done.
I don't even remember that.
No, because we did 6th, then we did 3rd, I think we went up and did.
We did the.
Correct, down to that 3rd, Nima Hall.
But from Nima Hall to Highway 36, they may have did a milling overlay, but that had to be a long time ago.
I think that just.
And it was one of the reasons why we allowed 6th to be part of the truck route, keep trucks come up there.
Now, 1st Street, 1st Street got a big old nice milling overlay a long time ago because they needed a detour when they was doing the bridge out here.
What, what street is the backside, like, the east side of the part, or the police department? And then, that used to be this thing?
Well, that's Pioneer.
But that was, okay, so we're not talking about that?
That was just that little dippy-doo right there, yeah, no, I don't think that, they just re, re. They rerouted lines in there to get, so they could get rid of that dip through there, and then that's what caused the little gas problem, because nobody was inspecting it, and they decided just to put the gas line inside the sewer pipe. Here recently.
So, I guess I want a general feel for how much do these streets that are getting built up in the Chippin Seal, how, how much are they bothering us? What kind of priority are they as far as, do we want to pick out some sections and start working?
Do you know what the cost is to?
I asked Brian, and we don't have a cost on it yet.
What, it would be a good idea to kind of get a cost of what it would cost to do a milling and then sort of overlay per block.
Per, per square foot, because some streets are wider than others, or whatever, however, they, they surely got a number, but of course, that number could be smaller if you're doing a lot, but if you're doing small, it's going to be bigger. But how are we doing on our, like, 3rd Street, how many more years we got on that?
It should be paid this year, isn't it?
I'd say with the Main Street, how much on, we got to go on that?
Main Street's, Main Street's done this year, our last payment is in December. And then, the 3rd Street one.
Have we did it before Main? Strung it out a long.
10 years.
Third did third before Main.
Third was done before Main.
3rd Street's not done until 2030.
So, we strung that one out.
I think we did the refunding bonds and refinance and things, because there were a few things mixed into that.
You were saying 2030, that would be a 20-year loan, that was what we did, because we did that after I got on.
But we issued the bond that's, that that's under in 2013.
Right, because we could get a better rate.
So. So, there's other things other than 3rd Street?
I think there was a water project in 3rd Street that was rolled into that.
Exactly, there you go, just put it all together.
That milling overlay thing. Who gives you the answer on how much you have to have to make, justify getting that type of service done? I mean, it should be a minimum quantity of work done if you're going to go to that extent of getting a milling overlay. And what volume of work do we need to be considering to make that a viable option is what I would be concerned about.
I would think we've got to go get some rough numbers from all the others, though, couldn't we?
I think that's what Brian was talking to.
Yeah. Have to get a ballpark figure, then we can go from there.
I don't think you want to have a deal coming like that and do a few blocks, you're going to have a fairly extensive project.
If you knew, if you knew what the cost was per block, you could probably figure out which streets or which areas you need done.
I guess that's what I'm getting, what's the cost per block based on how much volume of work?
Exactly, because you still got setup and everything else and get their equipment running, and then they got to have this plan out here running, you know?
Probably an idea for less than 200,000.
You got what I'm talking about?
Yeah.
But I really think that Main Street ought to be a priority, let's do something to get that done.
Well, if our Main Street project is about over, do we, do we start thinking about doing another bond too? I don't know what the bond rates are by now, get some of that and some other stuff done, but I don't think it has to be decided this much here.
The other thing that's getting close to being paid off is Branch Street, 2024.
I guess, this milling overlay, I'd get in a rough price on that, that would be a bad deal. I would agree with you, this from 7th to 10th is a terrible shape on Main. That would be the first one I would hit besides the milling overlay on, you know, or South Aids, or whatever you want to call it.
What are the rates on, on those bonds?
I don't know what they are right now, I haven't looked at them.
But realistically, if we're doing 7th to 10th, there'd be a question about, what, about 10th to 11th, is it?
Oh, yeah.
Is it good enough to leave, is that what you're getting at, or what?
Well, no, I don't think you're going to have near as much work in that last block, because you ain't tearing out the old brick, and it's just asphalt, but whatever you put in on 7th to 10th, you just want to go to it.
No.
Make this a say, whether it's going to be concrete or.
Well, I didn't know where you're getting at, because you just said 7th to 10th, but I think 7th to 11th needs to flow together.
Absolutely.
Well, I agree. Okay, worst part is 7th and 10th, so I'm.
So. Any other clarification on where to go with streets needed?
I think I understand, we want to focus on trying to get something going on 7th to 11th, and that we want to get cost for milling overlay and look at how much is, we need to do in order for it to make sense, to make it the best value right now.
So. When that, when you're going for that discussion on milling overlay, does it make sense to talk to the same outfit about, what about Roanoke Street?
Yeah, they give you that.
I'm sure you'd have to go in there, what would be the intent of the council to take the bricks up and put a solid street in there? I would buy the bricks up. No more bricks on Roanoke.
Well, I think, I think a lot of the citizens in the community are really, they're happy with, with the concrete before asphalt, so if we're going to do anything, I'd go concrete. But I, I agree, if we're going to have a truck route like that, we better, better propose the bricks, just do concrete.
Well, in my opinion, Roanoke, just as well wait till we got, till we're, one of our big projects done, and if we have to, we start another one. But if we're going to be a truck route there, I really think we're going to need to widen that thing. Every brick street in town is, I don't know how many feet narrower than the rest of the streets. And if you're going to make a truck route, they need to be able to turn on to it.
But really, can you start Roanoke after, before you pay off 1st, 3rd Street?
That's what I'm saying, wait till we get one of our other ticket items done, and then work into that, and do, I don't think you want to just pull up a brick and asphalt to take the trip, or concrete, or whatever. I think it needs to be widened if it's going to be the truck route.
So, I think, I would wonder about that width myself.
Is it considered part of the truck route?
Supposed to be.
I know they call it a farm-to-market road originally.
We made, we made it a truck route, but it wasn't good enough J six, and we gave them that little chalk on wall that to get in between, because they said it's a pain to ask to get turned on to it, and I can see their reasoning.
Any other concerns about streets from anybody?
What's the one, 11th Street north of 36, going on the Spring Creek?
Is that ours to the bridge? Or what kind of agreement did we end up making with the county?
It's supposed to be ours to the bridge.
But I thought we made some kind of a main. But I thought we made some kind of a maintenance agreement with them.
To take care of it.
To take care of it, included the highway, wasn't it?
Yep. I don't remember how that thing reported, but it is getting a little spongy and spongy.
There's something to check into, Bill.
There was an agreement made in the last.
Two years ago?
I'm going to say in the last two years, but the county on how that was going to be handled and how we would.
There was something because we were working it earlier.
We were going to pay some part of it. I think, uh, Peter and Paul was going to pay a part of it.
Yeah, maybe it was in the township, wasn't it?
Yeah, in the township. There was.
Three or four entities, isn't it?
Exactly. There should be something to follow that.
So I guess that brings up another issue of when you start talking about that road heading north, the road heading south out of the city, where does it become the county's responsibility? Is it at the bridge again?
I don't think so. Not quite. Six Lemons. I don't know where it's at.
Well, Mason Drive is.
Oh, yeah.
So that bridge is right at the end of that, the crop addition there. And then Runaway is in the city, which would be buttoned up to that bridge.
Henry's not. Sherman's not.
But is it a something that we need to have another agreement that's in similar terms as the one for the road that goes to the cemetery is the one that goes out of town?
You think that other one was done a few years ago?
I think within the last two years.
I would agree with you on that. Three of them both. It was pretty recent. They were supposed to do something every three years, I believe.
We chipped steel. How far did we go? We chipped steel. I have him.
We haven't.
We haven't had to do that yet.
I don't know if they have because it's getting so built up already. I don't know. Have they been there to do it?
I don't know. Well, if you look at the, like, where.
Al Houd lives?
With the, yeah, there and then right on down by Dwayne and the Kings and right on down to.
Even where the, uh, the NCTC thing is?
Well, there's no curb or gutter in there. There is, but it's all covered.
But you go like where Al Houd is and there, the curb is completely at it up and out with that asphalt.
But it fills everywhere. It fills up with mud and silt and everything and just, you ain't got nothing. Just the water right pulls up, so. Yeah, I think something needs to be addressed there in the near future. Let's move on to electric on the utility departments. The rebuild of the line alley from Maine, south of Maine from third to eleventh was in the twenty twenty-one budget. Got put on hold because of the February electric bill event. City does not have enough manpower on staff to pull off a project of this scope. Project is estimated to cost eight hundred thousand. Then we also need to address how to recover or cost repay that six ninety-five loan we took out to cover the February bill. However, that is something that should be looked at in depth at a committee level for as far as that loan recovery or, uh, different options there.
Does that eight hundred thousand include like the extra manpower we would need or is that just like?
That would be bidding it out to a, a larger crew that would come and join.
Would be the.
I would imagine that all we built would have some minor stuff that we would still be doing.
Yeah. As far as seeing it on, uh, Wilson did not think we could handle that.
There would still be some involved with our, like, department, but yeah, I, I know what they're trying to do there and it would be way too intense for our three-man crew.
I did find a report of that project. Have you guys seen that or not of what will all be done?
Oh, I might have a long time ago. I think Bruce gave me one or something.
I don't think we've seen it at a committee level either.
Yeah.
So that would be a place to start on.
That was another. We need to do this. It's about a year.
Okay. There is a report that details what would be done and there's a map that shows how things would be laid out.
Matt would just, yeah, we need to do it and that's about where it's planned.
But if that's already included in the twenty twenty-one budget, are, are we able to do it because we got the loan? For the bill or if we decide just to?
There's nothing in the department to do it.
Well, right now, because we got the loan, our cash balance hasn't changed significantly because of that February event. So we could still do it unless we wanted to pay back a lot of that all at once. And then we might want to step back and think about that a little harder. Like if you guys decide we want to pay back that loan all at once and, and not spread it over the ten years that they have it set up on, then I might want to pause a little bit and think about doing that and doing this project in the same year.
My question at this point in the game would be for that eight hundred thousand dollar project, is that even a reasonable number? With material availability and material cost, A, B, C, whatever it is, you know?
Yeah.
Hold it off a year would might be better.
And put it, they want to put in steel poles instead of what's there and I'm sure the price of those has probably changed, so we need to.
And whether it's available.
We're probably looking about four years ahead.
My steel is, went up, but it's maintained and copper is still stupid.
Can we put that out for bid? Doesn't mean we have to accept to do it.
No, and we could reprice the material list in there and kind of see where we are, you know, before we even put it out for bids. That would probably be worth doing.
If, if it's something that could last another year, I really think it's going to get a lot cheaper put together.
Actually, I, I can talk to them.
However, they catch it up. Once they get the steel in there, it will come down.
Well, it was done the same time that they were starting, started on Main Street. That's been a long ago.
Two thousand ten, two thousand eleven.
Main Street's ten, ten years old.
Sure. Two thousand eleven, twelve.
That'd be better, right?
Or if it's close, close one to two. Yeah, also that's, but that's, no. That's that rebuilt project.
Not this one over here, this, this.
The, the three blocks, the main three.
Yeah, they're called eight hundred thousand then, ten years ago.
As far as the loan we took out, is there really any benefit to making it all back right away versus there?
On that likeable thing?
Yeah.
It was a really low winter second of that, like a half percent.
Well, the intent was to see what kind of response we got.
Well, yeah.
And they, they went on their timelines and just keep pushing it out. They don't think you're ever going to get an answer. They're just going to keep dragging their feet.
So then.
So then it becomes an issue of what, what does the city just want to suck it up and pay? What do you pass on to your consumer and what do you do to your rig going forward? One of the questions that I've had before we have a committee meeting is, is what are we going to do to circumvent it from happening again? If we have any options. I'm going to guess I have to do it within the last year sometime, but I, I really don't know.
What we're done then?
When that bid was put together for eight hundred thousand or for most engineers estimate whatever it is.
Really, I mean, if it was hidden in the budget for twenty twenty-one, it would have been fairly reasonable.
Well, do we need to really look at the intense tonight?
Well, no, somebody asked when I put together and that's what she's looking for.
I think regardless of whether it's sold off here because prices are going to be lower.
Is it something that can be held off another year?
Well, I don't think that's an answer we have to have at this moment, but whoever he is working with, see if they think the cost estimates have changed would be the first question. And what their recommendations are, if we should be moving forward with it for us. Jim's feeling it may go down in price in another year.
The report was from December thirtieth of twenty twenty.
So, so prices hadn't went up too much, but in PBC, uh, steel and copper had not been crazy and it's crazy now.
So anyways, uh, what do we want her to do about that? Do we want her to have it re-quoted, uh, re-estimated it, uh, put it out for bid? What do you, what are you everybody thinking?
Well, I'm thinking, uh, Bruce probably just got Wilson Company to give him that number. I can't think it'd be that hard for Wilson Company to throw it, I don't want the new number to be, just using the same numbers that he's already got. He's already got all the measurements done, all the holes. And his opinion on how high the price will be.
And maybe this, maybe this would be a combined electric committee meeting that is what are we going to do about our bill? And are we going to move forward with, recommend to move forward with that project or not?
Works for me.
Moving on, if nobody else has any comments on that, the sewer, we're still looking at getting the Sunset Drive lift station replaced this year. Is that all still good?
Yeah.
All the products supposed to be coming, all the goods are available?
Still think it can happen before the new year.
Now, the lift station, the old LCR or SKF also need to be replaced. That don't need to be till twenty twenty-four?
Yeah.
The KDHE permit for lagoons is up for renewal in twenty twenty-three. We do not need to have the work completed by then, but we do need to be, need to at least be in the process of addressing the issues at that time. Sewer infrastructure is an eligible use of American Rescue Plan funds. Pam thinks we should use those funds for the project in late twenty twenty-two or early twenty twenty-three. And when we look at that, uh, de-sludge the lagoons, five hundred thousand, is that three fourteen coming to, to payments or is it going to come along or?
It's going to come in two and you have to go in and request the funds and you'll get half of it this year and half of it next. So that's why I was suggesting maybe we can do it more towards the end of next year.
But you don't have to show that you're using it right away. You can hang on to it and just say, we're going to pay for this down the road.
So you have to have the funds committed for use by December thirty-first of twenty twenty-four. And you have to have them used by December thirty-first of twenty twenty-six, I think is the, the date.
Well, it doesn't need a problem.
Yeah, it's a time.
Is that five hundred thousand? Is that wrong?
That's to do the whole dredging then, removing the sludge.
But you only do one at a time, don't you? Each cell?
I'm pretty sure it was all of them.
I mean, you can't drain them all at once, so I don't think we can do that.
Well, it'll take you a year.
They de-sludge while they have water in it.
You just scrape the bottom.
Oh, they don't, they don't dry. They got a thing that goes across there and sucks like a vacuum almost off the bottom.
You got to stir it up and then they got to find a place to put that. You just got to find a farmer or something like that will take it for the first one.
There's a timing element to it that you have to, you know, get contractor, that he would find somebody willing to take it, farmers, whoever. And then they need to not put it on the fields though until after harvest, so we're talking fall. So you need, kind of need to time the project after the year to get the testing done, get everything set up and then have somewhere to go with it.
It's got to be done during winter.
But realistically, we need to be on board in a year, so that's not that much time.
By the end, we start really working on this hard around February so we can get our contractor done and then plan to have it done in October, November. That's kind of the timeline I was looking at.
And are there more than one outfits that you can get requests for proposals or is it go to only certain individuals do it or how does that work with the?
I'm not sure.
Is there KDHE standards that they have to be a certain contractor or?
Well, we'd sure have Wilson Company involved in this.
Oh, yeah.
What's that?
Yeah, we would have Wilson involved with that.
And they ought to answer that question for us.
But I guess that's where if we're going to be able to request for proposal from different outfits, we ought to get on board with maybe having that happen. If they're full this fall and they're going to start filling up for next fall.
They can get us up, start looking for.
I'm not sure. Would that be something like paper camp that Henry and those guys did?
I don't think, uh, that was a little different animal as far as that goes. I mean, I've agitated city lagoons before, but it's really hard ways to handle in the manner you handle.
It's a little bit tough.
Livestock.
Well, I'm taking, uh, what probably be a few more regs from KDHE. Well, I mean, yes, a lot of the prepared up. Farmers, big farm out here, yeah.
I wouldn't count them out.
They've done dairy lagoons and everything else out there, so.
Who's that? Who does that?
Dale, Dale Evercamp, Fred Henry.
I would say using funds on, at least get that done because in reality, from what I read on them, uh, whatever they're called, ARP fund, American Rescue Plan funds. I looked at all the things that you could use for and I couldn't see anything on that list that really worked for our municipality besides that.
Well, there was a document about thirty pages long of free, only ask questions that Doug gets sent to me. And there's probably all kinds of creative things you could do, like expanding outdoor spaces and building something like that. There was a lot of maybe gray area. You might have to work some things in.
But this didn't look very great to me.
No, it was pretty cut and dry.
This would be cut and dry and I say, and we got, we've always had it on the back burner that need to be done, good opportunity.
Yeah.
You bet.
Aside from lost revenues due to COVID, it was broadband infrastructure, water, sewer.
I think we're kind of ahead of the game on both those.
So the de-sludging was one step, but wasn't there some steps that included aeration, different aeration and?
Uh, I'll have to read back through that.
That some steps needed to be added to our process, so we didn't.
You mean to meet compliance with that roll water letter that we got?
For that, and then also if we had better aeration, is my understanding that we didn't, uh, tendency to sludge up was less. If we treated our lagoons differently than what we currently are, we wouldn't have the buildup happen as rapidly.
But I also kind of remember too that there was a part in there about now we don't have all the infiltration. And after we get them de-sludge, when they check our output that comes out of the lagoon that goes into the creek, that, that number can change drastically just because we didn't have all the extra infiltration from rainwater and whatever, stormwater got into our system because there were so many gaps in it. So they didn't really know where, where our number was going to be until we got to that, until we did what we did first, but until we de-sludge, we don't really know either. Until we de-sludge, we don't really know either.
All right, then moving along to the water, the water rates were last updated in January of twenty fifteen. The fund balance of twenty twenty one has averaged about two hundred thirty six thousand, which does not leave much in reserve. This is another thing the utility committee should look at at some point. I know we hit the residents with the sewer and water increase when we did the sewer. And, you know, it was a big hit, but yeah, we were still within the state average.
Yeah. Within other communities.
Kicker to us at that point was because we wasn't within the state average, we couldn't apply for any funds to do our sewer project. You know, any grants or anything.
Too low at that time.
Exactly.
Because we didn't charge enough. So I guess with that being said, I think we want to pay attention to what state average is on all this stuff. In the event that we have to do a major project, we can at least apply for funds, available funds. Okay. Moving on along to the police department. Body cams, the building, gun range improvements, we're in the twenty twenty one budget. Evidence storage, indoor parking area, training, short term animal keep. Our reasons listed by the chief for having such a structure. I don't know, we regularly replace vehicles. I don't know what the concern is with being garaged. I guess I got some real issues with some of the stuff that goes on within vehicles anyway, so. Me personally. And we have options for training and storage here at City Hall. The City Hall space is not in good shape, but unless we're willing to discuss, you know, turn this building down and start it over. We need to improve these areas and put them to use somehow, and that was some of the discussion we had earlier.
It's going to be a lot cheaper to remodel than to start over.
Yeah, it would still be here. It's still a city, isn't it? Just had, I don't know where the thing he was going to put this thing at, and it seemed like it was a very good spot to me, even if you had it.
So looking at this map, where where was this supposed to be? Out here? Right here? By White Care?
I have a box or a piece of something out there that people put on sticking it in. I don't remember. I never really did hear.
I think it's a bit to that bull rather property that between assisted living and it's kind of that easement area through there. Follows up through there, I think, is what we've talked about. Up here in this end.
How would they have?
Yeah, the curve, I thought that's where they was talking at.
Okay.
I don't know who wants to discuss any of that in open session, but I would get into personnel issues real quick when I start talking about it. So I'm waiting to discuss that. If you got any comments about body cams, the building, the gun range improvements, the SUV, whatever, I mean, go for it.
Are the body cams like, do we have, they currently have, no, don't they? They have, I believe, voice ones. Okay, so this would be just like an up.
They've got the car camera.
Dash.
Dash camera with the microphone that they wear that records.
If they turn it on.
There you go.
Yeah, I don't know what happened to one issue up there on Main Street.
Oh, it's got turned on.
What improvements were they doing to gun range?
I think they were talking about paving the twenty five yard area, twenty five meter, twenty five yard area that's used more for pistols.
So, you know, my question to Tammy at that juncture was, why do we as county citizens pay for a gun range at the landfill that our city police officers aren't allowed to use? And why do we have to pay a special rate for something that supposedly our city police officers need? And is it a need?
But then our gun range can be used for public use.
I didn't know that the county has, or is that the landfill?
Yeah.
And then we can't use it?
That's what we're told.
I mean, our police, not personally, our police.
So that's just got their own Denver.
Well, we're not Nixon eighties tonight, just for.
I guess we're at thirty thousand, seems like a lot of improvements.
Seems to be in the county. The range should be fairly in between both both communities if you're all going to use the same thing.
I think a lot of these are a discussion that would revolve around what do you expect out of your local police department? Are they like extra layer of security that we're supposed to create? As we're county citizens, we have the sheriff's department that we all pay for as taxpayer. And then we want our city taxpayer to pay another level for a police department. And at what level? I mean, for instance, I need to, you know, store my cars inside. But why do we have more cars? You know, I think we get patrol cars to patrol with, not department.
The only thing I can say is that, you know, we're going to talk about their wages and things like that. Or we talk about people we might hire in the future, and they may really, really like those people and think they're doing a really good job. We'd be more open and be honest. I mean, you know, things could happen. You can't just focus on the staff there. We need to focus about what moves to.
On what? Focus on what?
What's done in that department, what's expected and what under the police department, where might they get things that help them do that? You know, and think more broadly like that.
And that's where I need to go right into personal problem with personnel that would go into executive session.
I'm just giving you.
Yeah.
Well, I agree, you know, with with the fact that these vehicles are out, supposed to be out in public use daily all the time. I don't know, it's not twenty four hour, but I mean, I don't know why we need a garage where we're basically we're basically trading, trading vehicles off all the time anyway, so. I don't see a need there.
I don't have a problem with the body cams, but they better be on them and used, and that's what they're there for. You don't know what you're going to need, but they have on in here. They're protected and whatever the other category is.
Yeah, I agree with body cams. If we don't have body cams, I mean, we better have them. We do have body cams for.
We don't have body cams right now.
We don't.
We have voice recorders and dash cams.
We better have body cams. Now, there's there's some of these school districts are talking about putting body cams on teachers. Especially your large metropolitan areas. I think it's a lot of building. We ought to probably be looking at body cams.
This quote that we have here is current, it's within the last four or five weeks, I'd say. And that's from how many? Five, I believe, and that includes they need to have some unit inside as well. And then there's annual expense because it's cloud based, so they can go right in and pull it up and watch it rather than having to take a physical recording device in and upload it.
So for forty two hundred bucks, they're getting five cams?
So there are. Steve corrected, there are three, and then three in car bases as well.
So three body wearers, three in car for forty two fifty, and the six, six seventy five is for all of them and annual expense.
Yep.
And so we got three body cams, and they're going to have to trade them off here.
Yeah.
They would be associated with the patrol car, wouldn't they?
Since there's an in car unit, I would assume.
They just got to go together, so. But we got four vehicles.
I guess some clarification on that would be good as far as what's really needed there. And is that a forty two fifty acre for everything they need, plus the six seventy five annual expenses for the cloud based stuff you said?
Yeah.
Should cover all the cameras. Any other comments on the police department? Move on to the fire department. Truck one will be replaced as it's the one that's on order. Truck one is the two door rule pumper goes on every call. Is now expected to arrive in in December or later. When the new truck arrives, the two thousand three international will be taken out of service to have the pump rebuilt. Once rebuilt, the plan is to sell truck three, the yellow nineteen eighty two GMC, and make the two thousand three international truck three. Fire department has approached council about replacing truck two. The thought would be need to hold off until twenty twenty three to give the department time to work with the new truck and have a better idea of the exact specs for the next new truck. The next new truck that they're wanting is a four door city truck that stays in town.
Well, let me get used to decide what they want. It'd be nice to get them spread out anyhow just for twenty years from now. I think there will be our problem, but it'll be somebody's problem if you get a fire truck coming in every year. Kind of screws with your budget.
Is there any way we can move that twenty twenty three to twenty twenty five? Maybe get it spread out a little bit further?
I mean, I think there's some options there as far as what we can do.
Yeah.
Sit down to this and.
You know, that's putting two, that's that's fine. I think a lot of fire department, fire equipment.
Now, we've been paying five year.
But the truck doesn't leave town.
That's insane. And how like what, it's a very low percentage of their calls are in town. I know they tell us every year, but I don't remember exactly.
But it seemed like even before this purchase of this truck and purchase of this next truck, how many purchases have we had the last year or early last?
Yeah, we tanked the truck and.
We've just been getting hammered like all once, and they're supposed to be spread out for twenty years. Let's try to get them ATV.
Well, they've added some extra equipment over the course of the past ten years, but.
Yeah.
I know there is some concern about keeping that city truck up to date and the effect it has on people's insurance rates. But that needs a little more in-depth studying to really determine how much that affects it. And I'm not sure they've quite determined that yet. But that's something they take into consideration when they're talking about that stuff. I think it'd be good to sit down with a group of them and have a discussion about what their needs are for the next ten years and really make a good plan for those trucks.
I think that sounds like a good idea to be to try to push that in town truck out as long as we can, but have that discussion with them to see what's acceptable. You know, I know we don't want to cause our fire rating to be to the point that it affects all of our insurance either.
Right.
So I don't think that's an immediate concern, but we just don't want to cross that grid. We have one of the best fire rates that any insurer could have, and I think we need to try to keep that up as a resident. So down to recreation, the pool bonds will be paid in twenty twenty six. You know, in discussion at committee levels, when Erin would come in and ask about this or ask about that, you know, I I told her straightforward that we needed to come up with every option possible for rec to make our rec department move forward. I said, but more the big picture when we was talking about hiring a pool manager and and what to do about baseball and whatever, whatever, and the swimming pool. But realistic, my vision is, is once the pool bonds are paid off in twenty twenty six, we opted for outdoor pool only by vote of the citizens for the tax issue. That tax issue doesn't sunset, but if we're not going to come up with a plan to improve the pools, whether it be indoor pool, rec center, whatever along with that pool, I think we need to talk about what we're going to do to sunset that tax. And instead, I would have rather have some involvement from a committee, not just a committee of council members, only a committee of residents associated with figuring out where to go with indoor pool. The stuff that we didn't opted not to exercise when we built the pool to begin with. And because we would have funds after twenty twenty six to do that, we're not too soon to try to start planning that. But with that being said, there's a whole lot of things to think about when you start going down through this checklist, you know. First thing would be that third baseball field, you know. And then how that affects the rest of that area out there, so to say. Obviously, drive into several things of what do you do about concessions, Dan? What about this? What about that?
Parking.
I think to cut through the chase a little bit, parking is another one. But to cut through the chase a little bit is if you put a third field out there and get all your parking and everything handled for baseball, softball fields, so to say, can we eliminate? can we eliminate the stuff down on whatever it is, Pearson Field? And call them soccer fields, or is that an acceptable move?
Well, that would be, like you said, get a committee of people that are involved, but some nights every field's busy. And we add one more ball field, I mean, maybe you could get rid of that little small one because there's no parking for that one and it just clogs everything up. Actually, the Pearson does too, as far as that goes.
But you wouldn't play, you wouldn't have the two at the same time, soccer's, they're not playing baseball, those soccer's.
We get one more ball field out there, doesn't mean we don't still need those fields, is what I'm saying. Because we got, what we got now is completely full on certain nights, is what I'm saying. If we get one more ball field out there, we can't get rid of two up here, I don't think, is what I'm saying. I think it would still, we'd still need it.
Yeah, we still need Pearson, but I don't think we need a little one too.
The thinker.
Yeah.
So I guess the question becomes why you need community involvement is there's been a certain amount of heartbreak over whether we, you know, use this green space up, so to say, around them ball fields. You know, and basically you're taking away an area where they did play soccer. But you know, even in this picture, we don't even show the Oakley Place. Oakley Place is potentially gonna ask for more land as they move forward, you know, the, the whatever, when they were talking about putting an outdoor amphitheater, they wanted to put it right out here. You know, I think it's high time we come up with how we're gonna address our recreation as it concerns baseball, softball, et cetera, and soccer for that matter. And what are we gonna do with this area out here instead of slowly getting it picked away? We've had other people come in and request that they could buy more property there.
No. Yeah, if we put, if you put the ball field over on the.
That corner.
That corner, you're always gonna need parking on that, that side of things.
East side.
East side.
Well, there, in that.
Like you said, that swimming pool.
Comprehensive plan, I mean, I obviously know it's just an idea, but it had parking drawn in there's with that access road. It's on an access road.
Yeah, with the access road.
With the new road.
And you would tee off of that. And the other thing is, if you do, if you give it a hand off to the swimming pool with the indoor, you're gonna need parking probably in the backside hooking up to that.
Now, we could, there's the thinking long-term, if we did add a third field here and we wanted to move soccer fields down where Pearson is, you know, we may, like I said, long-term, look at citing another place for another complex. Wouldn't probably be room for it here, but maybe there's another place.
I've had someone bring up the fact that we need in the house, you probably, you mentioned this too, or maybe kindly, about a dog park.
Yes.
To walk.
There's all here.
For a walk.
For walking dogs in a dog park, so I, I don't know. You know, that would be something that possibly the ball field to the right along Eleven Street would maybe make for that area.
Could you give me one of these with, with the new property lines type drawn in here kind of? Do you have any access to some of that?
Can you take it out? We have this because I think we've lost from about here to here to the church.
I don't know where this line, where this line is on the school for sure, but I do know that Oakley's got this.
Yeah, I'll see what I can find.
Follow where I'm going?
Yeah, that's just pulled off the Google.
I understand, but is there any way you can, and it wouldn't have to be perfect.
Or you can go on the county, county site, website, pull up the maps there.
It'll show you prop, it'll show you property lines?
Oh, yeah.
I guess I haven't looked at, had a little spot, I've looked at some of their stuff, but I didn't know that was there.
No, but I agree, I think a committee of is a good idea to get, yeah, inputs from the different associations and the.
Here again, too, I, you know, did, did we not at one time have a, a group of citizens that were, I mean, they, they were kind of on a community planning type deal, like for instance, the downtown area? Cause I know when the honeymoon was on downtown, she was always right, Main Street.
Yeah.
Do we still have the group that's involved with that?
I mean, we have committees, they're not necessarily the same committees and they're not necessarily looking at those particular things, that doesn't mean we couldn't.
But we had a group that was the pool, that had nothing to do with.
Right, yes.
But it was community, different, different parts of town, different thinking, you know, did it together. We came in on a regular basis, kept the county or the city aware of what we were doing, you know, and kept it up to where everybody was involved and it was pretty smooth coming in. But there was some, like it was Dr. Rakowski.
Yeah, he was a spokesman that come in all the time to the council.
So was that the pool committee or is that?
Yeah, just for them.
It's the pool committee, and the reason, the reason then that even, that we decided not to recommend inside pools is that we would, if it's a city this small, probably wouldn't be worth their while to keep it. He said, you don't, you don't understand, he said that whoever, we have a lot of liability because it's inside and you have, you know, light things there.
Right, you had white.
And then you can't keep, it's not simple to keep that water where it needs to be in regards to.
Chlorinated.
Clean and all that kind of stuff and then the prices, you can't imagine the price and you gotta have a big building. Masses have wiped that came down. And then the thing that of course was up when they were leaving was that the citizens wanted to walk. And they wanted to do that day and, and we created cold and warm weather and we didn't get that. We, we didn't have the time to get that. They'd be okay, you know, but they're walking, but when it's not so cold. But it's, when it's cold, it's, they need to open the doors and then, you know, maybe it's a little. But we chose not to do it because of the cost of operating.
And staffing in here around.
Yes.
You'd have to have your staff all, all the time.
But there again, how did, you know, Samantha come up with that facility of theirs that's tied right in with the hospital? That's where you need the community involvement, it takes a couple of people to come in with the hospital's viewpoint, come in with, you know, softball association, the baseball association, the legion, the soccer, high school, USD one-on-five, you know. This field we have out here that's only allowed for the legion and the high school, I guess, or whatever it is, you know, is that what, the way it needs to be or?
Yeah, I think, I mean, they indicated an interest in buying that property, but I don't think it makes sense for us to not own it because we own everything around it. But something talked about with them is, you know, doing a lease so that they would maintain it, keep it up. If they wanna do that, because I think they're reluctant to do much with it when they don't own it. But if they had a long-term lease, maybe that'd be different.
I would do a lease before I sell it.
Well, they said they'd take it if we give them. Yeah, that goes. But that's why you have to have involvement from all those entities. So they know that we're gonna do something to accommodate recreation and at what level. Now, is that a couple of separate groups? One associated with the whole pool function, one associated with the fall deal, or is it all one group that takes care of it all? You know, and to what extent, you know, it looked like we had three options when we built the pool, A, B, and C, and we went with A because for a lot of different reasons, but the main one was, was that's the way that people voted, that they would vote yes for this option for the sales tax. And I don't know, with that, information's somewhere available of what those three options actually were, you know, revive them and see where it stands today, you know? And does it even fit into what we got going on here with what we've added since the pool has been put in? And not that we've added much of Scope Park in that particular area.
And I know it's a part of it too, and I know it's on the sheet, but you know, we've also talked several different times about splash pads or splash marks and that type of thing. I think I don't wanna lose that, I think that's something that.
I would go with that for an indoor facility around that, those things are about the best thing anymore, I think, too.
I, from, I mean, I, I hear, I've heard from tons of people that they wish we had one and I think they're really.
You got a young kid, you don't have to deal with it. They can go run around and.
And from like people who babysit, you know, maybe they're like a daycare situation, that they don't have enough people to take all the kids to the pool. They could go to that.
Yeah, because they can't get much trouble.
Yeah. It can be opened earlier and later than a pool is, it doesn't require staffing, yeah.
Right.
That is something I think we could do and should do soon, sooner rather than later.
Yes, I agree.
Again, I think that all needs to be part of the master plan of where we're going with that whole area. And probably Scope Park is the most viable spot for that. But as you look at those numbers, you know, lights at Swisher Field, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, you know, how's, how's, you pay for that?
Boy, they wanna replace all the lights?
No, if you put in lighting to light that field the way it needs to be lit, that's what it would take. I don't know where that number come from, but somebody generated that number along the way.
It ain't lit good enough now?
They tried to replace the lights.
Till you need, or something.
So that, that goes back to that planning thing about if it's only good for the school and it's only good for the legion, then where does the city taxpayer fit into that budget?
Right. So we're just talking the one field is what that was, I guess I missed that one? Oh, it's bleachers at J C, okay, very good.
So this concession restroom thing, that thing needs to be placed. So like, we need to figure out a plan, but that thing really needs to be.
Out there, out where the two fields are now?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree there. We need, we need to be getting that problem done next.
And I would say the concession stand should be built. To accommodate their field, even though that's right away because it's a natural fit right there.
But we should put a plan together that this is what our vision is, just so there's no question about it when somebody comes along and says, we want new A, B, C in that spot, and then we're all sitting here going, well, what do you think? What do, what do we wanna do about that, you know?
Been doing it already.
Other committees could, for all of it, put it all together.
I spoke with Erin briefly about that prior to you coming back as administrator, and I don't know if she's ever put any more thought process into who to all approach to. But I think as a rec director, she should be highly involved in that process of putting that group together as well. Any other comments on recreation at this time? The items historically budgeted annually are curb and gutter replacement at sixty thousand, sidewalk replacement program at ten thousand, and then we give ten thousand spring recon for it. I don't know, we ran into a couple of problems here lately with people wanting to put in driveways or whatever and then their curbs don't line up correctly. And if they pour their driveway into the curb disert, then that ends up the driveway's wrong when they come back and replace the curb. You know, I don't know if anybody has any concern about that curb and gutter or sidewalk replacement program, if we can work something out in curb replacement as well that allows the property owner to get some kind of a percentage paid up from the city for an improvement too. Typically, you know, the one thing that came up where we had some issues was the down on South Nightgale there at Nolte's when the curb was replaced because they were doing their driveway. Honeymans were ready to do their driveway and they did do their driveway, they just didn't finish out the curb because a curb replacement's coming in probably next year there. Would they go ahead and put the curb in? And if we offered the same kind of deal we do on the sidewalk replacement program, are we gaining or not, will we allow that to happen? You know, I don't think we just paid the bill because somebody decided to put their driveway in when we're not ready to do a curb replacement, but I think we should give them some consideration to, the curb is taken care of, we don't have to come back and do it next year or the next year. I don't know what anybody thinks about that, but that's my thought.
They'd still pay fifty percent, we'd have fifty.
What's that?
Be a fifty-fifty.
Up to, you know, and we have a certain pot of money. But it, it could be included with maybe increase what we use on the sidewalk replacement program to a higher number, but it could be used for either one and when it runs out. And halfway to the next year.
Does that ten thousand dollars for sidewalks really get depleted, or is it just depends on the year?
I think it's usually pretty adequate, I mean, I don't think it's, I think there's usually money left over at the end of the year.
But there again, too, you know, should, if someone's going to put in a curb or put in a driveway or whatever, that could deplete half of that fund right there.
But you could say fifty percent up to a certain amount.
Yes, I would say you put a cap on it. We need to have a cap per person on that.
The sidewalk is maybe a two thousand dollar cap?
Is that what it is?
I think so.
That they can't get no more than two grand?
So if we do driveways, then we're gonna have to.
That's what I'm.
No, no, I'm not talking about driveway, it's where the curb, just the curb. So in other words, when they do the curb replacement program, the resident gets a letter that says, we're doing your curb at your driveway. If you want your driveway done, we'll do it at this cost. It's the way it's been in the past, and I've got one of those notices to board. The, the curb is gonna get replaced, if you want any of your driveway approached, taken care of, you're responsible for that, but we'll do it for whatever the dollar amount was. So I wasn't necessarily saying we need to do a driveway, just the curb part of it if it don't match up. Or consider it.
You're talking about like the reverse happens, where we say we're coming along with the curb if you wanna do your driveway? Where what has been happening is people are saying, we wanna do our driveway and your curb doesn't match up. What do you have to do about it?
That's the problem.
Yeah.
I had that problem fine. And I told Brian that when I did that. And that I wanted to replace that. And I'm like, okay, I wanna replace this, because it's bad, the last, whatever, view was getting bad. But there's a big old dip right there on the other side of my driveway where the alley was, and I'm like, I mean, I could replace it, I'll make it match, and the water's still gonna sit there. So it was a couple of years and then I think Brian tried to work it in to the curb replacement. And then I went ahead and I paid them guys to do the driveway while they was there, just like you were saying.
Yeah.
The guys probably want it, but. But there is a situation where you run into that, when you wanna try to put, you wanna make yours drive, you wanna try to patch it back to what you gotta deal with, it is kinda pain fun.
So there's a lot of.
Yeah, I can see us doing it, but boy, where do you stop and start?
Well, we have a, some type of a cap on it so that we're not completing, cleaning a big portion of it on one, one or two jobs. So everybody has a share.
Just another thing, um, sometimes when it's cold and deep, full of snow. sometimes when it's cold and deep, full of snow, and they're running the graders down and they admitted to doing it, it took a big old, somebody was going too close and they.
Take a chunk out of it, yeah.
And so two years later, I finally got them to come, it was my neighbor, finally got them to come up and fix it, and they fixed it themselves. But there are times where it was, it's not colored and the rest of them.
Well, I know when I redid our law, I had, I was paying for that curb, curb on that deal, which was only about $12,000.
So if we looked at the sidewalk program, and then I talked to Brian about what maybe the average cost on a curb in that situation would be, so we can kind of develop a cap that's appropriate. And see if we can get a plan that we bring back here.
Yeah.
The only thing I see that we don't have on there is, and we talked about this once before, was what about the fence on the cemetery?
We did talk about that a little bit, but we didn't know where that came from or what, if any numbers are being put together on, or did you find any?
I don't think you ever did it.
You know, someone was telling me that they, I'll take a look at St. Benedict's cemetery, yes, that they just redid theirs, so. Michelle, do you know anything about that one or?
I know, it looks really nice, um, yeah, and they had a lot of the parishioners out there doing volunteer work, but yeah, they had a, I don't know the details of it though.
I, I did get their Lord's families from that area, and it's got wrought iron, it's beautiful and very appropriate how they did it. I think they keep a book to tell who's where and all that.
Yeah, I think, I think it's something that we ought to probably look at, especially along that, where that gets a lot of traffic. And, you know, there's a lot of residents live out there at Spring Creek. We ought to probably kind of keep that area a little bit sharper and going up, up on the law there. So I, I would, I would ask, cause we could probably get some, try to, you know, get, try to get some bids or something as far as what the linear feed is, how many, how many, how many feet there are and what the cost would be. We could probably even have our own crew do that as the summer approaches.
What did, why? He did the hunt, hand up what we're doing, is some kind of metal fencing? I mean, and where did that stuff come from? It would be where I was headed with that.
It matches like the playground and everything, it looks really nice, yeah.
There's probably a lot of options here, just now going up and looking up. Kansas State.
And then some of our discussion in trying to put a agenda together, Tammy brought up the IT services was other notes at the end of the memo. She has a couple of quotes for IT services to consider at the next meeting in July. She'd like to move forward with getting a service agreement in place as soon as possible. She's also looking at upgrading our accounting and billing software. The company we have used for years has developed modern solutions and we'll definitely want to take advantage of those improvements. She'll have the prices at the next meeting as well. The other thing is the telephone system, working with Rainbow to get a new telephone system installed. There is a cost associated with ending the contract with the current carrier, but the savings on our monthly bill outweigh the cost to terminate with our current carrier. And we'll be getting that switched over in the next month or so. And then of course, the planning commission ended that July 1. They recommended council revise ordinance, set membership at seven rather than the current language that says no less than seven nor more than 15. An ordinance will be at the next council meeting. Main discussion of the meeting centered around interpretation of the section pertaining to wind energy conversion systems. But discussion also came up at the end of the meeting about solar farms and what our zoning ordinance does and does not allow. The planning commission will be reviewing examples of language on a solar project at its next meeting, August 5. And the requests for improvements at the old hand, well, improvements were completed by our staff prior to the 150th.
Then you had a letter in here from, well, that one, put some lighting in there, so.
That was it.
That's what they did, so that got taken care of, okay. So that was part, okay, that was it before we got.
And I think we got the sales tax things, didn't we, this one?
Yeah, we got the sales tax.
There you go.
Yeah. All right. Giving sales tax came to a total of $96,145.70, which $72,832 was the city's 1%, and then for the county was $23,313, which is, which is better than, than we have had in the past, in the past several months, in the past several years. So really, our, our top last year was $94,000, so we're at $96,000. And the month before, we were at $101,600. I really think a lot of this has to do with the fact that we have, even though we're not getting vehicles, that many vehicles around this area, but they are, people are buying vehicles and the sales tax here within the city and the county on vehicles, plus the fact that you got lawnmowers. Their retail has helped a bunch, so. It's good if we can keep that up.
Thank you. A short executive session on this payroll thing. There probably will be no action, it'll just be a matter of discussion about different individuals that I think that discuss and. I don't know.
How long?
20.
Make motion to go into executive session until 9:00?
9:30.
9:30. Governing body and Tammy?
All set, Ken.
Yes. Jim moves.
The wires will be taken.
All in favor?
All in favor.